Well, good evening Cedar Falls and welcome to our regular council meeting for Monday, December 19th, 2022, the last meeting of 2022. I'll now call this meeting to order with a roll call from Madam Clerk.
Schultz.
Here.
DeBoer.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Harding.
Here.
Ganfield.
Here.
Sires.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
All members present, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If you could please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And moving to our minutes, is there a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of December 5?
So moved.
Motioned and seconded. Any discussion from the public? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. And that brings us over to agenda revisions. Do we have any tonight, Madam Clerk?
I have no agenda revisions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving over to special presentations tonight, I have a guest tonight, Major Martin from Salvation Army. Look forward to a special presentation to the city. So I'll join him there. So we are minimizing the number of proclamations and special events here in order to keep the business meeting really strictly focused to business, but this was too good of an opportunity to pass up. So as it is, if you want to tell us a little bit about this trophy?
Sure. For the last 12 years, we've had a battle of the bells for the Salvation Army fundraising campaign for the Cedar Valley between Cedar Falls, Waterloo, and Evansdale. And for the last 12 years, there's been one decisive winner until now. So we want to congratulate and thank you for your participation, but the winner this year is Cedar Falls under the leadership of Mayor Rob Green. We're super proud of you. We take no stake in who wins, but we're so glad that you and your, our playful game of which city will raise the most money, that outside of city limits, you see the value of supporting and helping the entire Cedar Valley. We appreciate that and we gift you with this fabulous, huge, awesome trophy to commemorate your win.
I don't know if you can zoom in, but it's got Cedar Falls. It should ride in there, right on the front. So we'll be the proud carrier of this trophy for the year and probably for the next two decades or so. That's the goal.
Good luck next year.
Yeah, I see that Mayor Hart already has his little plaque on most, or the first part of this already, but we're going to try to fill up the rest of these on the other side for you. So I want to thank Cedar Falls residents for your participation in this on December 3rd. And Salvation Army is still raising money for this fiscal year or for the calendar year closing at the end of this month. So they do wonderful work for the community regardless of people's faith or background. I've been personally very impressed to see the heart that you showed to the community during our floods, during the duration in 2020, and this is truly a community effort. So thank you for your part in that, Major.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Can I just leave this here for the entire... Perfect. I'll take it away. But you can see it in the display case. So for Mayor Hart and Mayor Kabliska, maybe I'll just keep it right up here. All in good fun for a great cause, but we like winning. Okay, with that, that's our special presentation for tonight. And take us over to public forum where speakers will have one opportunity to speak for up to five minutes on topics relevant to city business. Does anyone from the public wish to speak in public forum tonight? Yes, ma'am. Name an address for the record, please. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Tammy Stahl. I live at 1009 Lake Shore Drive. I'm a member of an independent think group. Much of what I came here to speak of tonight is from a lecture via this group in the past couple weeks, which I am happy to forward should any of you request. It has become clear that counterintelligence tactics are being used on a set of national and state level by both elected and especially-
So ma'am, this has to be a topic relevant to city business.
It is. It is. It is. Thank you.
Okay, so if you could direct your conversation to what the city of Cedar Falls can do to respond.
We have riots in areas of several cities burning uncontested. Even many of our basic rights and freedoms, including speech and healthcare, being dictated by unelected officials. We can no longer blindly be led by city officials trusting their intentions or actions. I've become concerned, many of the counterintelligence tactics are being used in our city, especially by unelected officials. I would like to review just some of these taught tactics to look out for. One, techniques to dilute messages. Two, misdirecting information. Three, tell partial truths. I would like to use roundabouts as an example to investigate an adjacent business for their preference between installing lights or roundabout. Officials might go to a business and discuss lights. They report to city council that the business wants lights. City council members might go to the business and ask why they prefer lights. The business replies that they were never given the option of a roundabout. Tactic number four, flat-out lies. If unelected officials would do what I spoke of above previously, what other things could they be doing untruthfully? Number five, truth suppression. Number six, controlling the speech of the person or persons that has or tries to speak their truth. Number seven, hide their confidentially, hide behind confidentiality clauses. Number eight, dripping misleading or false information to the public, creating unjust embarrassment or character defamation. This defamation takes ages to fight along with much money needed for a lawyer to defend yourself. It has even become next to impossible to defend our children's rights unless you can afford lawyer fees. Number nine, create a situation that is unjust but most feasible to walk away from. Number 10, manipulate info citizens get. Number 11, evoke authority. Does this possibly pertain to planning and zoning? I just finished serving on a state board for nine years. Most boards, at least, insist that at least two public members represent and guard public interests. Number 12, dismiss information is old news. Number 13, using flaws in a system to intentionally or opportunistically manipulate an outcome. Number 13, characterize a situation as too complex for others to understand, or more troubling, overly simplify a problematic situation. Number 16, purposely setting people up for failure. Number 17, secretly, doing secretive discoveries. Number 18, recruiting people to set up failure. Number 19, command the narrative. Number 20, deny access to information in declaring confidentiality. I suggest that these unacceptable tactics are unacceptable tactics for our city. I have experienced some of these tactics directly myself from unelected officials. If elected city officials see any of these tactics being used, especially regardless, and regardless of political affiliation, they should demand accountability and-
One minute remaining.
-action to defend. Your job is to protect the citizens. Currently, it seems some council fear, feel powerless and others relish giving complete control to unelected officials to avoid the discomfort of their elected duties. I've given a few examples of potential issues. I wonder what other significant issues could be lurking in the city shadows. As a gardener, you know, to really weed, you need to dig down into the dirt deep to get every last piece of root to stop the weed. The same could be said when looking for answers to a flaw or a solution to a problem. One last thought, a lie doesn't become truth, wrong doesn't become right, and evil doesn't become good just because it's accepted by many. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stahl. Does anyone else wish to speak in public comment tonight? Public forum? Okay, seeing none. Then we'll move from public forum into staff updates. Does staff have any information they'd like to pass along tonight?
So just a few things here, Mayor. So we're into the holiday season and this is very pertinent. So Friday, December 23rd, Monday, December 26th, and Monday, January 2nd are all city observe holidays. So city offices will be closed again. That's Friday, December 23rd, Monday, December 26th, and Monday, January 2nd. And in, as we move into January, both meetings will be in, on a Tuesday in January. January 3rd will be the first meeting, which is Tuesday, January 3rd, in observance of the Martin Luther King holiday on Monday, January 16th. Tuesday, January 17th will be the council meeting on that date as well. So-
Okay, thank you.
And Mayor, I think you had some updates on the EMA levy?
Yes. So I'm currently working with the other emergency management commissioners. Just as a background, the state requires every county to create an emergency management commission under state law. The commission is made up of the mayors of the county and also the sheriff. And so I meet with the emergency management commissioners monthly to discuss budgeting issues, training, disaster response, preparedness, things like that. There is a proposal that's coming forward. It might have hit the papers already. It still is in process, but I wanted to let council know, just to update an email I'd sent you a few weeks ago, that the county is moving forward to establish what's called the EMA levy, the Emergency Management Associate, or Agency Levy. That's something that's allowed under state law and would provide for a certain percentage of property taxes to be dedicated toward emergency management. And in our case, it would fund the 911 center that's located down underneath the county jail. So it's a change. It's a difference in fee structure in order to provide stability and funding for the dispatch center. They recently went through a major comprehensive study of staff availability, training, equipment, tools. And so that information will be forthcoming to the councils in the coming weeks, but I just wanted the public to know that it is something that's currently in discussion. The city already pays, basically at the end of the year, they tally up how many calls were made for service. And then it's partly based on your percentage of population in the county, but with those two figures, they, the auditor then pulls the funds together in order to cover the costs of dispatch. So it's sort of like a pay-as-you-go service. And that's been a discussion that's been in the works for several, I guess, years now of pay for service versus having the service available. So it's going to come before the city council for discussion and approval in the coming weeks, but because there are so many different jurisdictions that are part of that discussion, it's something I wanted to make sure you heard from me first of where that's coming and so our public would know as well. And I'm sure with the courier, if you'd like to have a follow-up discussion, maybe tomorrow about that of what that means. There's no one single spokesperson for it. So I can certainly speak on behalf of Cedar Falls and what that'll mean for taxes in Cedar Falls. With that check that goes from Cedar Falls currently, that theoretically would go away because we don't have to pay that. It would just be coming right out of the EMA levy. So it's not something that really can discuss a lot tonight, but certainly be providing more information in the weeks ahead, but just wanted to front-load you on that as a staff update. So with that, looking over at special order of business, item two is a public hearing on the proposed conveyance of city-owned real estate to Cedar Falls Utilities by means of a non-exclusive permanent easement for relocation of utilities. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And Madam Clerk, do we have any, or is that passes? Madam Clerk, do we have any written communications filed?
There are no written communications filed, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And before we go to staff comments with Ben Claypool, just ask for the audience, it's really loud here for me. Is it loud for me speaking to you as well, or is the volume good? Should I pull the mic back or am I all right? It's kind of booming right here. Okay. So with that, Mr. Claypool, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The public hearing tonight is for the 10-foot easement on the north side of our West Viking Road Industrial Park. That is, has been under construction for this previous construction season. This easement is in good faith effort by CFU to relocate the existing overhead electrical utility along West Viking Road on the north side onto, into a buried line on the 10, northern 10 feet of our industrial park. This gets them fully out of the way and can speed up the construction progress when we begin the actual roadway reconstruction. That's slated for FY '24, FY '25. There's no issue with the 10 foot of land or any planned city infrastructure, albeit the agreement still allows full city infrastructure without any impedance or any other utility to be impeded in that 10 feet.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Claypool. Do I have any questions from council? Oh, excuse me, before we go to that, we have open for public comments. So does any member of the public wish to speak on this item in the public hearing? Okay, seeing none. Then I'll consider the public hearing closed and now bring us over to part 2E, which is a resolution approving and authorizing conveyance of a non-exclusive permanent easement to Cedar Falls Utilities for the relocation of utilities. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved.
Motion and seconded. Open for a discussion from council if you'd like. Okay, seeing, oh, yes, councilor give it.
Wanted to ask, I guess, one question I should have asked earlier, but is this filling in the ditch on that north side, or are they going to be underneath the existing ditch?
I can clarify. So the, putting it in the 10 feet on ours gets them completely out of even ditch interference during the reconstruction. Them having to relocate to the ditch, they'd have to go even much deeper. So by relocating even further south off the road, causes no planned conflicts.
Any other questions or comments from council? Okay, so it's been motion and seconded to approve and authorize conveyance of a non-exclusive permanent easement to CFU for relocation of utilities and requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So that does pass. And that was our only public hearing tonight. So that moves us over to the consent calendar where these items will be acted upon by a voice vote in a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Does any council member request to pull an item three through seven?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Sires.
Number three.
And any from the public? Okay, seeing none. Then I'll entertain a motion to approve items four through seven.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that does pass and takes us to item three, which is a mayoral veto 3021, or excuse me, 3021, amending section 18-35, powers and duties of the Planning and Zoning Commission of the Code of Ordinances relative to removing two-thirds majority vote required by city council to approve amendments to the city's comprehensive plan that are disapproved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and ordinance 3022, amending chapter 26, zoning of the Code of Ordinances, relative to removing the two-thirds majority vote required by city council to approve zoning amendments that are disapproved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is there a motion to approve, or to receive and file the item?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Open for discussions. So Councilmember Sires?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I believe that the council should have the supreme power over any committee. And I also wanted to open this up to discussion for the public so they could get up and say whatever they would like to say. I feel that this is, actually goes against the voters because voters vote for us.
I'd have to say Councilmember Sires.
I understand. Nope, I put that out there. Now I'm going to be done. Yep, that's it.
And so for Mr. Rogers, I don't want to play parliamentary games on this, but it's a receive-and-file item. And so the merits of the veto are not open for debate, correct? Do I understand parliamentary rules correctly, or is it open for debate?
Well, to the extent that Councilmember Sires' comments could be related to whether council should receive and file, I guess it's fair, but I'm not sure how much discretion the council really has and whether or not it makes any difference because the mayor has issued the veto already, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Kevin, could you go over what are our options to perhaps overrun the veto?
The law provides that council may repass a measure over mayor veto within 30 days of its issuance. And so formally getting on the agenda, the council rules provide there's a couple of ways. One would just ask to have the item added to the next council agenda, or council could always refer the item to, to the next council meeting.
Okay, so, Councilor Harding?
Is it a two-thirds vote to override a veto?
It is. Two-thirds of all members.
Two-thirds of all the members present, or two-thirds of all the members?
All members of council.
Okay.
So this, we haven't done a veto. We've not been in this position before. So I'm not sure what the right approach is here. I'd be open for discussion on this, like for the public's ability to speak on receive-and-file. I have no concerns about that.
Me either. So procedurally where we are, I think there's been a motion and second. There's been a comment and trying to vote, I think.
Yeah, well, I'm, in every item that's brought forward, I certainly offer the public the chance to comment. So if the public would like to speak on the receive-and-file.
Tammy Stahl, 1009 Lake Shore Drive, and I would like to state again that this is one of the tactics that it seems completely inappropriate. The, the Planning and Zoning Committee seems to be packed with people that can benefit from decisions made on planning and zoning. And our city council is put there to be able to look after our best interests in, if you're taking away our voice, on Planning and Zoning Committee and then tying the hands of city council. This is exactly what I'm talking about of a totalitarian regimen taking over our city, our city hall and why we should all be fearful from things that are already going on and that you're trying to put into place right now.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. I would note, though, that this has been in place for decades. This isn't a change. Yes, Mr. Fairbanks.
Craig Fairbanks, 405 Spruce Hills Drive, Cedar Falls. I should have taken this up at public forum, I guess. But anyway, thank you, Mayor, for reappointment with the Housing Commission.
And I'll ask you, please, to keep your comments focused to this receive-and-file item.
Okay, I can do that. I do thank you for the opportunity to speak today. In many communities, we get five minutes here to speak. In many communities, you see it reduced and more and more reduced and more reduced and more reduced. I saw a school board that has reduced theirs to 30 seconds. And how is that debate with the citizens? But I do thank for the opportunity to be able to speak. Our council discourse related to this item, this didn't start tonight. This started last year with a different council. And the deliberation process that we seem to have on everything doesn't seem to be working well. We should be in a different place than we are. We see this on a national scene where it's, you know, the last man standing is the one who wins and I'll do everything I can to stop it or win. And I don't think that should be that way. We had an opportunity last year to actually discuss this issue and debate it properly. There was lots of talk and bantering, going back and forth, but nobody's minds were changed. None. And that seems to be what happens all the time, is that nobody's earnestly listening to the citizens that come here who prepare to speak to all of you, and yet your minds are already made up when you come into this chamber. You can, you can see it on your faces. And it's really unfair to the people who come here and speak. Had we had one little word called compromise, we wouldn't be here. What's been asked to be reconsidered was something that was pretty small. What's been asked to be reconsidered was something that was pretty small that even by staff's considerations probably wouldn't be a big deal and may never be used, but we send it back to the Planning and Zoning who has all the power, is the most powerful organization in, in the city and not elected. You are the governing body. It shouldn't take, it should not take a gargantuan effort to reconsider something. It shouldn't, and on the veto issues, I realize that you've already made that decision because it was broadcast long before the, it was broadcast long before the considerations were done. How do you get fair debate? I think at this point, we've had six council votes and, and six planning and zoning votes, and we're still not anywhere because all the process has been voided. I would implore you to reconsider your veto and let the council stand, because there will never be a reconsideration without the ability to overturn it. If it is so hard to overturn it, it's impossible. So, with that, I would thank you and kindly ask you to reconsider, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fairbanks. Does anyone else from the public wish to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, bring it back to council, final comments. This is for receive and file.
So, Mr. Mayor, can you clarify, we're receiving and filing the veto?
Correct.
And then we have thirty days in future council meetings to override the veto?
Correct.
Thirty, thirty days from when?
From the veto?
Mr. Rogers?
Which is received and filed today?
Issued with the veto, and I don't have that date, it's probably in the packet when the mayor issued the veto.
Right, because all you're doing is receiving, this isn't a formal action, it just puts it into the record.
It's already been done.
You've already had the access to the document.
Okay.
So, it'd be thirty days from then.
So, now the public can view your veto, digest it, think about it, and then we have to motion to have it on the next council meeting to discuss overriding the veto, is what you're saying?
You can do that by referral or simply request that it be placed on the agenda for the next council meeting.
So, either, either works.
So, I'd like to make a motion that this will be on the next council meeting for a discussion.
That'd be something for referral, so that would, that's not an appropriate action we could take here for receive and file, but certainly during the referral period, please bring that up. That's at the end of the, at the end of the meeting.
Well, I guess I don't understand, we're supposed to argue or debate whether we should receive and file this?
Correct.
If we don't want to receive and file it, what happens?
We discussed that this morning at EMT, it still is an, an action. You don't have to, you could express disagreement with it by not receiving and filing it, but it doesn't change the validity of the action.
So, I don't get the point of this item on the agenda.
Yeah, what, what, what council will be saying if they vote against receiving and filing is not making the mayor's veto a permanent part of the council records. I don't know, honestly, I don't know why council would do that, just for public's sake, to see that document as part of the permanent council record, but council could do that, doesn't invalidate the veto whatsoever, it's been issued already.
So, this is state protocol, state ordinance, I'm assuming, that they go through these steps, receive and file?
It, it, it's more local custom to have veto messages part of permanent council records.
Similar to the, when I used to do mayor's updates via record, it was mainly just to make sure that they were in the public record and read.
Okay, so, there's not much choice, as I see it?
Well, there is. The choice is to have it received and filed within the city's documents for public future record, or to say you don't want to have it received and filed and therefore it won't be a part of the, the public records. It will still be a veto.
Okay.
It's, it's more for record-keeping.
So, by agreeing to receive and file, we are clearly not saying we agree with the veto.
Correct.
But, that we're saying we want to have it in the record so the public can read the document that the mayor submitted if they so choose.
Correct.
But, it clearly means we do not agree with the veto.
Not necessarily.
I said, if, if a person votes yes.
Sure, okay. So, with that, any other discussion? So, it's a motion and seconded, receive and file that, there's, that veto letter. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Good, thank you. That takes us over to the resolution calendar where these items will be acted upon by a roll call vote in a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Does any council member request to pull an item from nine through twenty-seven?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, councilor done.
May I pull item number thirteen and item number twenty-five?
So, thirteen and twenty-five.
Mr. Mayor? I, I'd ask to pull twenty-six since we're talking about twenty-five as well, they kind of go together.
Okay, so we'll just have that as a joint item there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, councilor Sires?
Item twenty-four.
Twenty-four, okay. Okay, any others? And any from the public? Public wishes to pull tonight? Okay, so with that, is there, I'll entertain a motion to approve items nine through twenty-seven, accepting thirteen, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
Working on it.
Was it councilmember done?
Kelly, I, I, sorry, I thought it said it took it again.
It's a new system.
We believe you.
Sorry. And I was making us, we didn't have to hit refresh last time.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So, that takes us back over to thirteen, which is a resolution approving and adopting amendments to Personnel Policy nine zero three grievance procedure for the city of Cedar Falls. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Motion and seconded, councilmember done. You have some questions, comments?
I just pulled this because I don't support the, you know, the, the policy of the council being involved in personnel matters with the city, so I just wanted to pull that and voice that, and so I could have the chance to vote a different way.
Thank you. Any other comments? Noting that this does change from the original document to reinstate a council committee as being the last step in the process, so.
The last step of the city process.
The city process, yes, and they could go to district court or whatever if they wish to pursue further.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, councilor Sires?
I think it's important for the city council to always be a voice in disagreements among the employees or citizens, so I'm in favor of always having the city council be involved.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Doesn't this return it to the way it was before they made changes to it?
Yes, it'll be instead of the administration committee, which, as I understand, the goal is to do away with that committee entirely, it would just shift it over to the Finance and Business Operations Committee. Okay, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The only minor change I just wanted to reiterate as well is that you, as the ombudman, would be removed from the initial grievance panel, so that it's a slight change from what it was three weeks ago, but other than that, no, it just keeps the renamed committee as the last step of the grievance process internally.
Right. Okay, any other comments? Any from the public? Okay, so, it's been motioned and seconded to approve and adopt the amendments to the grievance procedure for the city of Cedar Falls and requires a roll call vote.
Five voting aye, two voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and that takes us over to item twenty-four, which is a resolution receiving and filing and approving and accepting the bid of Peterson Contractors in the amount of twenty-nine million, nine hundred ninety-seven thousand, forty-nine dollars and fifty cents, being the only bid received for the Main Street Reconstruction project. Is there a motion to approve?
Submit.
Second.
Motion and seconded and open for discussion. Councilmember Sires, you have a question or comment on that?
Uh, yes, this Main Street has come up, and it's ten million dollars higher than what it was first proposed at. I believe it was about twenty-one million, and now all of a sudden, it's, yeah, let's see what the number is, twenty-nine million, nine ninety-seven, and that's a tremendous amount of money. That throws an extra ten million dollars, pulls it out of our budget, I think that's a tremendous amount. I think also, it'd be nice to have a couple of contractors bid on that. I know Peterson is very big and very reputable. I'd be opposed to this because it's going to push off all of our more important things several years down the road, so I'd like to see us not do this right away, and that's why I pulled it.
Okay, thank you, councilor Sires. Question for staff, did we solicit for other bids?
Yes, this, this project was actually in the Iowa DOT bid letting process, so it was open to all contractors.
That statewide or?
Correct.
National?
Okay.
Question?
Yes, councilor Harding?
Is the, I did read that the DOT, you know, kind of supported the increased price, but is the increased price mostly, is it due to, to costs of materials, supplies mostly, or is it due to labor costs, or is it a combination? Why, I, I know right now contracting's incredibly hard and, and prices are up, but do we have specifics as to why it was so much higher?
I, I guess I would say all of the above. Since August, so this was in the August bid letting process where all the documents, plans, cost estimates were submitted, and that's what our estimate was based on, costs as of August. Since August, compared to the November bid letting, costs just in the DOT bid lettings have went up twenty-one percent, and twenty-one percent of this magnitude of project is, is large. If we would redo the estimate now, the estimate would be closer to twenty-seven million. The, the fuel costs, the, the shortage of labor for these contractors, that's likely why we only see one bid on the, on the project, is what contractors can secure a contract for three consecutive years and lock in a, a fuel price and labor prices and things like that. So, the DOT acknowledged, I know that they're seeing this across the board right now for all their projects, and, and they don't really have any idea when it's going to kind of plateau, so.
So, they were saying it's a twenty, projected twenty-one percent increase, that this looks, or has been talked about being closer to forty percent?
That, that was just the, the actual price difference from August to November, the prices in materials and to do the work was, went up twenty-one percent. That's not even taken into account that the, the unique circumstances of this project, it's, it's a, like I said, it's a three-year project, sewers close to twenty-five feet deep in areas with a tight corridor and having to keep it open to traffic, things like that, and inflate the cost, and, like I said, the labor shortage and things like that for the contractor to do the work.
Are there, excuse me, are there things that could be done to reduce the cost? Items that could be taken out of the bid, or?
Um, ju-just for reference, almost half of the project, almost fifteen million, I believe it's thirteen and a half million, is buried in the ground that you'll never see. Sanitary sewer, water main, storm sewer, culverts, things of that nature that are just utilities, very essential, no matter what the roadway configuration is on top, those all need replaced, so those are, would have to get replaced no matter what. Things cut out of, out of the project, I wouldn't say there's not a lot of cutting based on council direction, three-legged corridor, intersection types, on-street bike accommodations, those are pretty straightforward, there's not a lot of cutting, so to speak, out of those items.
You had made mention that the infrastructure that you're talking about that we're never going to see, but we have to have, is between a hundred and, a hundred and fifty years old?
It's around, the water main and sanitary sewer are around a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-five years old, yep.
But, aren't they still in good shape, that sewer main? We haven't had to line that or anything, or we have lined it?
That sewer main is, and water main are both in terrible condition.
And, and.
Yes, councilor done.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Director Shragi, I, I know the answer, but just because the, do we anticipate that cost is going to go, even if we kicked the can down the road, do we anticipate that this is going to get cheaper down the road?
Obviously, I'm, I'm not sure, not confident. I can tell you that projects that were la- last, last year that were twenty-five, thirty percent over the estimate are still continuing to go up from last year's bids.
Sure, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, councilor agrees.
I look at this, and the thing that stood out in Director Shragi's comment, the contractor shortage. We're in or approaching recession, we have monetary policy by the Federal Reserve raising interest rates with the intent to slow down the economy, to slow down inflation rates, and it takes time for that to take place. We're coming out of COVID, it's not imperative that we have to do this in the next three years. We resurfaced Main Street to the tune of about a half a million dollars about three, four years ago, and I, you know, if a water main fails, we dig down and fix that spot, or we reline it. We reline a lot of stuff in town. It's very easy done, I've done it to some of my service lines in my rentals, but I can't do this to the citizens, this is a thirty-eight percent increase, it's already twenty-one million dollars, the original estimate, and you need more than one contractor bidding on this, and down the road, we could see more contractors becoming viable as the economy settles, as raw goods settle, and that sort of thing, so I'm definitely not in favor of doing this now.
Mr. Shragi, could you address the, the federal funding that we have that we would lose on this particular project?
Sure, so, this project would include three point four from the federal state, three point four million dollars, two point nine through the Surface Transportation Grant, a five hundred thousand from a Traffic Safety Improvement Grant, and also, we have approximately two point six million dollars of ARPA funds that are allocated towards this project, so that puts us close to six million dollars of federal funds.
So, what's to say that in two years, we can't get those same grants and apply for them? They're not going to just disappear and never be offered again, are they?
The, the STBG and the Traffic Safety Improvement Grant will go away, from my understanding, we received approximately sixteen dollars of ARPA, which we have to do reporting on of where those dollars are being spent, they have to be spent by a certain timeline, I believe twenty-four is the first year, but the STBG and the Traffic Safety Improvement Grant will go to another project in the state.
Okay, but we could get the price down by another nine million if, if we get more contractors bidding in the future. I, I'm just not in support of this, regardless of what the funding is, we can find funding sources down the road, we always, there's always options out there. This is too much money to burden the citizens with.
Councilor Dever?
Are there expenses that we've already incurred for perhaps easements or temporary easements that we can't recoup or that we would have to spend again?
Correct.
Do you know approximately how much that would be?
Oh, I want to say right away it was around seven hundred fifty thousand, and then the design fees were probably somewhere around there, so we're, we're over a million dollars into the project already.
Those fees are still.
I would just like to make sure that you're getting permission from the chair, please.
Not everybody's doing that.
I'm going to ask everybody to please get permission from the chair to speak. I just, I don't want to have crosstalk, and I want to be careful, okay, so, councilmember Cruz.
The easements and money spent for the design can sit on the shelf until we get an appropriate bid from a contractor in the future, correct? We've got the easements, we've got the purchases.
The easements are only good for a certain window, and also the specifications for projects are continually changing, so those would have to be updated whenever it gets reintroduced into a bid letting.
What, would they change SUDAS or, or the?
Correct.
And, okay, but would that equate to nine million dollars for changes? I, I venture not, I'm just pulling something out there and guessing, but I'd say.
We're not, we're not sure what the future brings, like the DOT has stated to us, they're seeing this across the board, and we don't really know when it'll flatten out, so.
Does any other member wish to speak?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor done.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I'm on the same page, so we, we've already spent about one and a half million dollars in easements and the design. Okay, so I just wanna make sure I'm on the same page. So, we, we've already spent about one and a half million dollars in easements and the design. Am I understanding that right? And we would not get that back. That would not be, um, like, i-if we kicked the can down the road, we'd have to spend that and more maybe later?
Correct.
Okay, and then if I calculated right from those numbers, we would be losing the nine point four million dollars that we've secured in grants and outside funding, um, if we did not move forward tonight. And yes, maybe, because we can't predict the future, maybe there might be other funding, but there's, there's funding in here, like, we hope we don't have another, uh, pandemic and have ARPA funds of it, I mean, so, but nine point four million dollars is what?
It's around six.
It's around six, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, my math is terrible, okay. And then just because, again, I feel like, again, if you're not in the simple math of, um, our sense, I mean, we don't have a growing state right now, so this labor shortage is likely not going to be, unless people start flocking in droves to our state, this labor shortage that is affecting many, many, um, industries, including the, uh, construction industry, is likely not going to let up anytime soon. The sewer and the infrastructure that's aging, I know you can't predict things, but, I mean, are we really to the max life of this stuff?
Generally, it would be less than a hundred years, it'd be eighty, around eighty years that those would need to be replaced, so we're.
We, we're really pushing it.
And, and what are we at now?
It's around the one twenty, one twenty-five, yeah.
Okay, I, I understand everyone's concern, and, and I never, like, I, I know it, I'm not, it's, you know, I, I'm a citizen as well, so I, I, but I just, I don't think that pushing this down the road is going to benefit us. I, I don't think that people are, uh, that costs are gonna go down. I don't know that there's going to be a, uh, fix. It doesn't sound like we're unique in having a low number of bids, because there's simply not enough people to keep the, uh, the road construction going. Uh, I just, I, I worry that we're going to not, you know, we've already spent a hun, a million and a half dollars, and we could potentially lose the six million that we have secured and, um, still need to have this done. So, I just hope we don't waste all of that.
Councilor Schultz.
So, Mr. Shragi, would you say the burning bridge then is really the infrastructure? Being that, to Darrell's point of doing an overlay on the current road, what is our real, uh, necessity to do this as soon as possible?
Well, one, one of the major components is all of the underground infrastructure, is that, that thirteen and a half million dollars that I referenced earlier. That, that needs replacement.
Mr. Mayor? Well, first, actually, yeah, you called, so, so Councilor Cruz, please, first.
Uh, Director Shragi, why can't we just replace the underground sewer lines and then be more appropriate with the?
Sewers twenty-five feet deep right in the middle of the road.
Who put it there?
Is that relevant?
Being facetious, is that okay?
Councilor Harding.
So, I get it, it's, it's a higher number than we wanna see. Sewer's in the middle of the road, it's a hundred and twenty years old. You can kick the can down the road if you want. You can't guarantee you're getting the six million in grants back, and you already spent a million dollars. So, you gamble. If you gamble and you don't get any grants, it could be cheaper in the future, I'm not gonna lie. There, Councilmember Cruz is right, it could be, but it could also be ten million more. So, do you hedge your bets and, and bet on that, and have failures constantly to the city? Have to reline stuff, have to tear the road up every year? I mean, it, again, it's a tough pill to swallow, but I don't see the prices of, in the labor shortage, going away anytime in the next five years, or prices going down significantly. Secondly, if we're applying for grants and then getting all this money and then rejecting projects, next time we apply for the grant, that's not gonna look favorably upon us either, so I don't wanna risk losing the six million in grants, and then also having the project cost more in the future. Even if we scaled back some of the aesthetics and the roundabouts, let's say we still need to do, we still need to tear up the entire road to get to the sewer. So, we kick it down the road five years, now the sewer's gonna cost twenty million and we don't get any grants, so. There's no win-win here. It's tough, but I'm not ready to gamble on it and say that we can get it cheaper down the road. I just, 'cause I, I really don't think we can, so I've thought about it a lot, but that's where I'm at.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Giff.
Yeah, I'm looking at this, and I know that these are necessary expenditures, right? There are certain things that we will have to maintain, and obviously, an aging sewer infrastructure is a problem that we need to deal with. I have concerns with this being the sole bid we received. Obviously, I know that we've requested from everyone, or asking for all the bids. You're doing nothing wrong there. The difficulty I have is this nearly double, um, the going increase, twenty-one percent, uh, overage here, and we don't have any competing bids. You know, looking at this in my home, if I was putting in a real cheap ten thousand dollar kitchen, and I was already a little bit in, and then they said, actually, it's gonna cost you four grand more, I'm gonna wait, I'm gonna say, hey, I, you know, I wasn't on for that, even though I might've invested something already. There's another bid that I tried to receive, you may call me a simpleton here, but that's fine, but I tried to receive a bid for some, um, yard landscaping, and the bid came in astronomically high, and a computers, a competing bidder said, yeah, they'll do that because they don't have time to do the work. They just, they had to give you a bid, so you can turn it down. I'm not saying that's the case here. I don't know anybody from PCI that might be here, but I'd like to see us get some competing bids to verify that perhaps this does get reestimated at twenty-seven million. I guess I have a concern that we were so off to begin with, and then it may be uneducated, but I'd hope that that twenty-one percent increase would taper off and in fact come down. So, I'm not in favor of doing this without getting a competing bid. We have to get an alternate bid, in my opinion, to make sure that we're getting what we need. I don't wanna lose that six million dollar grant, I don't wanna lose the project and all the easements and all that comes with it, and I don't wanna ignore an aging infrastructure, but I can't under, in good conscience, say that this is fine. I'm good with a nine million dollar overage without a competing bid.
So, a question for Director Shragi, can, can we force contractors to provide bids, or, or mandate it?
No, it, it would have to be re-entered into the, the bid letting process through the DOT, which likely would take six months. So, it wouldn't be rebid till probably closer to next summer.
And it does have to go through the DOT bid letting process because of the monies that we have in there. So, that's really where the, the bidding process is.
So, do we have any discretion with that, or is it, do we just basically say to the state, here's our project, and they handle everything from there of the bidding?
They handle everything from there. You, we have to submit it a few months ahead of time, it goes through a process, and then, um, it actually ends up on a state letting. There's a schedule, so, um, you move that forward. Now, my understanding too, with this particular project, we know that the contractor wants to know before the first of the year, because all of his subs and all of his pricing, they've told him they're only good till?
End of the year.
The year, and then prices are going up.
So, if we're looking at them bidding or having their information for a, a next year, then if we're looking to bid again, is the, is the writing on the wall that it's gonna cost more when that bid comes back?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Cruz.
I got a big concern on, on what was just being said there by Mr. Gaines. This was talked about November last year, January, uh, this previous January. The sixth and main intersection has savings that is not being tapped into. We took care of the parking problem, and for some reason, this is all brought to the very eleventh hour that we have to make a decision, else we're gonna lose stuff. Why wasn't this brought to us in May, June, and July to discuss and?
It wasn't in the bidding process.
Why wasn't it put into the bidding process after January or February?
This is, this is the process, Mr. Cruz, is every time, and we'll see that with the next item that's coming up, is there's a bid that gets let. When that bid gets let, the council has to decide, are you signing a contract or not?
And we can only provide the, or the estimate, the contract.
And there's a certain time period you need to do that within. Now, the, um, we can, we can talk about, was the estimate wrong, was the estimate under, under what it should've been? Did they miss it? Did, uh, or is it something is, is simple as, hey, prices are going up and they're unpredictable? I, I think it's probably all of those things, so.
Well.
Okay, anything else that we would need to discuss or questions you might have?
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry.
Yes, Councilor Sires.
Uh, I just have a couple of questions for Chase. Uh, what size is that sewer, and have we lined that yet?
I'm fairly confident we have lined it. I don't know the size off the top of my head.
You have lined that, though?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And what's a question over here, a comment? Your Councilor Dever?
Well, as I understand, if you were, you were talking about if you rebid it in six months, we already know that if we did it in six months, it'd be approximately twenty-one percent more cost, and then.
So, I, I'm, I'm thinking that some of you are misinterpreting the twenty-one percent. When we, when the estimate was done in August, we used August, August of twenty-twenty-two prices. That's where the twenty-one point five million came up with, our original estimate. Since then, we took the average DOT prices from November, which was our letting, and from the average prices in November, the cost has went up twenty-one percent per, like, as an average across the board. So, since August to November, just standard inflation and construction has went up twenty-one percent in three months.
Mr. Mayor?
And that's using the bid prices from the DOT, from all of the other projects that, so they may say twenty-one inch, uh, uh, RCP sanitary sewer pipe, that cost has gone up twenty-one percent. That's just an example, so it's not specifically our price. It's the average, um, index price for these projects. If you look in the bid sheet, there's, what, how many bid items do we have, Chase? Probably a hundred, um, and you look at those, so that's, that's where that is.
Two hundred and one.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just like anything in the marketplace, you can look at farm commodities skyrocketing at any given point in time, and you can think that it's never gonna come down, but it always does. And we can talk to builders out in the audience here, lumber prices skyrocketed, they come back down. So, when we see a twenty-one percent increase, that's way beyond normal CPI, three, four percent increases over, you know, many, many years. And being a business analyst for thirty-seven years, I've seen skyrocketed pricing, stock market, farmland, businesses, gold, commodities. It all balances out and comes back to earth, so I do not believe that this is gonna be a parabolic increase in prices into the future. We've lined the sewer already. I've experienced the sewer lining, and I know that they put an epoxy treatment on the inside that's as good or better than the initial sewer piping or claybore tile that might've been there, or whatever was used. And I, I don't see that, we, we don't, we, we can wait, we can wait, is the bottom line.
Mr. Mayor, I just, it's, we, we've said that, I, I've been on this, in this part of this body since, uh, August of two thousand and twenty. That exact same comment, I believe, was made then. When do we think, I mean, I guess just asking, I don't need an answer, but when do we think things are gonna go down? That's, again, like Councilman Harding said, that's a gamble. You don't know that, and there's nothing to data that's showing that things are. Why would things go down when you don't have enough people to do the work in the beginning, or in the first place? We don't have enough lumber. I mean, I, I just, I think, again, that's a gamble, saying that it's gonna go down. We don't know that. It could, you're right, it could, but it could also keep going up.
And I would question too, for salaries and employee costs, if the expectation is that's gonna drop at any point, or will that just continue to increase?
Mr. Mayor?
Something to be concerned about. If, Councilor Cruz.
If, if, if people, I don't know how to say it without being too negative here, but if you pay attention to CNBC or whatever favorite channel you wanna watch for economic news, uh, the Fed is trying to slow down the economy very aggressively, and these rising costs that we're, uh, feeling are the inflation that they're trying to tame and maintain. We had eight percent across-the-board inflation nationwide or so, give or take, and the Fed is saying they're going to slow it down. And that will mean that, uh, everything slows down, and it could be wage growth, it could be, uh, materials, costs, uh, you know, shipments of goods and services and so on. The mandate from the, the Fed, Federal Reserve, is to slow down inflation, and that is these components that we're talking about here. Materials for pipe and so on. Um, it's, it's gonna happen, it just does. Economic cycles can be seven to ten to twelve years. I mean, the last time we bottomed out was, uh, March two thousand and nine, and then we had a run-up until this past, uh, January, and now we're having a downturn again, so it, it happens.
Councilor Schultz.
So, I, I guess that's the point, do we wait seven or eight or nine years to see if it cycles around? And I somewhat know the answer to this, but who monitors this as a, as a project leader? And is there any recourse during that time that we go with this bid, and two years from now, there's a labor boom, or there's a, a, a change in a technology? Do we, uh, have a realization of any cost decrease, or are we married to this? I guess Chase or Ron.
I can't speak to what the, the future brings on the, on those technologies or prices, so.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
I don't think we have an answer, it's all hypothetical.
It would be, it would be us. Um, the engineering department would be monitoring that. They monitor all the projects, um, and go through there. But yes, if you're signing into a contract, yes, you are, you are doing that. But to Mr. Cruz's point, as, as he mentioned, the, the feds are trying to slow down the economy and slow down the inflation. That doesn't mean it's gonna drop in a couple of years. It means the inflation itself is gonna slow down. That's, that's what the hope is.
Councilor Harding, and then we wanna wrap up something.
Yeah, I mean, just kinda last thoughts, you know, yes, the Fed is doing that, and we're trying to slow down inflation, but again, it doesn't mean that prices are gonna come down. It doesn't solve the labor shortage, it doesn't solve anything, except for, do we wait seven, twelve years to rebuild Main Street in? Well, I'm sorry, I thought you said wait seven, twelve years. My apologies.
Point taken.
If I was, if I misquoted you. I guess my point is, I'm not, I don't really care to, to gamble on, on waiting, and it costing more and losing six million, um, well, losing seven point five million dollars possibly, so. It's not worth the gamble to me.
Any new points?
I think, Mr. Mayor, the only new point I would offer is, there is statistical data to support that twenty-one percent is an outrageous swing in one direction, and it will offset regardless of the industry. This isn't a sustainable curve, otherwise, we're headed for real troublesome times when we all have other reasons to fear. The other side of the new point here is that, I'm curious, the question would be, when's the last time we accepted a bid below our estimate?
Not in the last twelve months, likely. I've referenced numerous projects, Mr. Gaines, that are all between twenty-five and forty percent over.
Okay, so, that, I think, is a problem for me, 'cause if I'm one of those contractors and I'm going, hey, Cedar Falls has never turned down a bid, even though we're way over, they're a cash cow, we don't have to cut numbers to where they're tolerable. We'll just send them what we got and see what they say. We've never turned down a single bid. We need to start turning down bids before those numbers come down to a tolerable level. This might be inflated, I'm not trying to insinuate anything about somebody at PCI, 'cause I don't know them, but I'm fixing to say no, just so we can find out what's a realistic bid. This is even higher than that twenty-one percent in just costs. If it was just the twenty-one percent that's across the board on DOT costs, maybe I'd be looking at it, but we gotta say no somewhere. Our citizens deserve better than just, well, I don't wanna gamble. We have to. This is too much. It's astronomical in the face of a recession. I yield, Jay.
Other thoughts?
Just wanted to say that prior to two thousand and twenty, we quite often did get, um, bids that came in slightly below or, or, or very close to our engineers' estimates, so our, our, our engineers are coming up with good estimates, and over time, we've, we've generally found them to be right in line.
As I said, the DOT is seeing this everywhere. We've seen it, our consultants, any one of our consultants have seen it on multiple projects across the. As I said, the DOT is seeing this everywhere. We've seen it, our consultants, any one of our consultants have seen it on multiple projects across the state. CFU's water main alone doubled. It was 1.5 and it's 3.1. So, I mean, that they have, they have to come up with that extra funding as well.
So the word of, of gamble came to the fore, and that really is where we're at here. Whether we're willing to, to gamble that the price that it is now is the lowest that it's going, we're going to get it at.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, there's one other key component, if I may?
Certainly.
Where are we getting the extra $9 million to cover the shortage? I know it was in CIP. I don't have that in front of me. But can we elaborate on that?
Sure.
I think it was lost money that was going to be reallocated?
A majority of the funding came from local option sales tax and road use tax or street construction fund. Specifically, two projects. One was a, a future project on Union Road from 27th Street South to University Avenue. It's currently a seal coat street. And at some point, as development continues south of the new high school, that will need to be improved. That was a project that was funded at a later year, I want to say '25, '26, that was pushed out of the CIP and likely will be reintroduced in FY '29. The other project was improvements along Green Hill Road near Hudson Road. And it kind of relates to the hospital site, the proposed hospital site there. Obviously, we've been awaiting that project to come forward for the last three to four years. That has not moved forward, so that project also moved out of the CIP and will likely be reintroduced in one of these next few years. And part of that is, obviously, the, the hospital's not, wouldn't be built in year one. It would take a few years to get that built, and then we can plan for those roadway improvements at that time.
But we're still taking away limited funds from the future to divert to something here, and that's going to kick the can down the road for those projects, which they will be more expensive under what people are saying here. I, you're robbing Peter to pay Paul, and it just doesn't make sense in my mind.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilor Dunn.
So I think of Main Street as a thoroughfare. So in emergency situations, typically our emergency service vehicles may tend to go down that route, correct, Director Burdy? So I'm thinking about if something did break, and, and right now, I remember you saying that, you know, obviously, this is a coordinated effort by the contractor to keep that road open at all times. If something breaks in the middle of the road, is it, like, less likely that they'll be able to keep it going, like, open? Or, I mean, I'm just wondering. Like, how would that possibly affect our emergency service response? And I know you can't predict, but it, would it be harder, I guess, possibly to keep the road open if we had to rip up at the middle of the road all of a sudden?
In, in normal circumstances, we, we like to try to keep the roadway open to traffic, but on an emergency repair, what you're referencing with no plan of attack going in there, it's likely that the roadway would be shut down.
So, and I ask because I am ignorant to how sewer, is that like a, it's a major pipe? Like, a lot of stuff flows through that pipe? Like, it's pretty vital to the way we get everything pumped from everybody's houses?
Correct.
So if it, it broke all of a sudden, I guess, does that, how does that work? If it broke all of a sudden, do we, do people's, like, waste not move, or how does that work?
Potentially have sewer backups in homes, things of that nature, yes.
Hmm, okay.
Yes, Councilor Harding.
Really quickly, there's no right or wrong here. I don't feel like it's, it's too, it's, it's a more conservative versus a more aggressive side. I use the term gamble, and I don't want people to think like, oh, I'm, I'm just, I'm gambling to, no. I think our citizens deserve a better-than-120-year-old sewer line, and our citizens deserve. Main Street is in disrepair. It needs fixed. We need an upgrade there. The majority of the cost is in that. And any way you cut the math, there's no guarantee that we're going to save money. To Councilmember DeBir's point, she is correct. I remember when I was first on council and when I was coming to the council meetings before being on council, there quite often were bids that were under. It's been COVID. It's been this fluctuation of supply chain. And so I can see both sides of the coin. I can understand people wanting to be conservative with this. But I, I want to make sure that we have that water main and that infrastructure for our citizens, and so.
This time, I feel like we've asked the questions we would want to ask in the most part. It'll be up to the public if there's any public comment on this. Yes, Mr. Fairbanks?
Craig Fairbanks, 405 Spruce Hills. I guess one of the fortunate things about getting older is that you have history, okay? This feels like 1981 to me. And things were out of control. Prices were out of control. And we had the Fed doing the same thing. It took the interest rates to 70 and 3/4 to stop it. That may be the case here, which, in a slow process, means it's not going to go down as fast. But I can tell you this, lumber was at $1,800 per thousand. Today, it's at 450. Other things are going up, but things are coming down. Subcontractors that we couldn't get, now we can get. It takes time. We couldn't find people to work. We're finding people to work. It is slowing down. Maybe not this minute. It doesn't look like that to you? But I looked at a chart this morning for the national markets, and they're, they're a pretty good indicator of where things are going to go. We're, we're right parallel with where we were in 2008, before the, before the housing crash. The next jump down is like this, straight down. I don't know that that's going to happen. I don't think it will, because I don't think we're overbuilt. But, and we do have a labor shortage, but we have lots of people coming over the border. So I imagine they're going to be here for a while, and God bless them, because they're hard workers. But to have one bid, no customer of mine would want me to do that if they were facing a high price. They would know I did my best to bring it down, and I care about my customers. Our customers, your customers, are the citizens who eventually pay for the taxes. Bottom line. Do we have any failures in the project at the current time? No. What do we do if any sewer line breaks down? We fix it. Know what we do? And my other question, I guess, is to staff, in all due respect, do we not have any control over the bidding process at all? It's all through the state. We don't get to pick and choose. We don't get to go talk and solicit bids or any of that stuff. I mean, I don't know how it works. I guess I don't understand. So, but to me, this looks like what an irresponsible person would do when their credit card and they can't make their payments, and they quick run up the credit card before they stop them. We, we just lack patience as people. I work with customers, and the ones who get the best deals are the ones that sit and work through the process. And we try to figure out, what can we do? What can we, what can we drop that you really don't need, that we can do later? I would implore you to consider that. I want the, I want the street rebuilt. I like university. As Ron can tell you, that I like roundabouts. They did a great job. But even in that consideration, the estimates that we got for that were blown away. That's just the nature of the beast. And almost always, those estimates that you get when you start doing a project, you'll never get those, because time passes by. But I would agree that a 20% increase, or 40% or whatever it is, is outrageous. I would go back, I would go back to PCI, and I work with PCI. I like working with PCI. But I ask them for another number. Don't ask, don't get. Ask them for another number. What can we do? That's what we do. We go back to talk to the subcontractors. Go talk to the, go talk to the people doing the work. If you want to make progress, sit down with people and say, what can we do to reduce this? There are ways to do this without spending money we don't have to. And worry about the 6,000 bucks. I'd never know a time when money wasn't available.
One minute remaining.
I know that I've talked to people about buying land, and people said, you've got to buy it now, or it's not going to be there. And the comment back from a wise person was, I've never not known a time when I could have a second shot at it. I think we're at a precipice where we need to consider slowing down, taking a look at it. I don't want to lose the money. I, I get that. But let's look at a couple of alternatives. We don't have to pass this tonight. But, thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Fairbanks? Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Yes, Mr. White. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Roger White, 2303 Greenwood Avenue. And thank you for the opportunity to speak. I think if we had done this a year ago, it would be 21% cheaper. I think if we wait another year, it's probably going to be another 20% more expensive. Now, do I know that? Do any of us know that? No, we don't. We know that there's been inflation. There's research that shows that well over 50% of inflation is directly the result of company and corporation excess profits. How much longer are they going to want to pocket the additional profits? I don't know. We can't predict that. I think we've kind of got a bird in the hand here. Maybe it's not the bird we wanted. But I would urge the council to take, accept this and start the work and not put it off any longer. To me, it's a gamble, and I don't, I'm not a gambler, I guess. And I would not want our city to be a gambler. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on the item? Okay, seeing none, they're bringing it back to council for closing comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor DeBir?
I just wanted to, we did put this off once before. In like 2000 or 2001, it was talked about redoing Main Street. And we put it off, and instead, we did the overlay. And so we've already put it off one time. And I'm, I'm curious on those grants one more time. You said that it's ARPA, and the other one was, you just, you call it a federal grant?
Yeah, it's a surface transportation is 2.9 million of it, and then 500,000 is the traffic safety improvement grant.
Okay, and we already know that if we don't do this now, we probably can't get those grants back.
Correct.
And if we don't get this ratified by the end of this year, before January 1, Peterson's estimate or bid is going to be void?
Yes, they, they have indicated their bid prices are only good to the end of the year, end of the calendar year.
All right, Councilor Cruz, did you have something?
I guess I was, I was just going to comment on the comments back and forth earlier about repairing a sewer line in a four-lane street, as it is now. Besides the option of having state and Washington to go around Main as thoroughfares, if there's a repair of a sewer line right in the middle, you block off the two middle lanes, you have two outside lanes that can be used for traffic, which will be ultimately what ends up on the new road anyway. So I don't see an issue with repairing the sewer line if, if need be in the future. And then as far as losing the funding, we're looking at 3 million in funding, but we have a $9 million increase in cost. If our cost goes down by 3 million in, in another year, we made up for the grants and funding that we didn't get anyway. So I don't really see a big concern about that, ultimately a small amount of, of grants, because the big picture is that, as our speaker from the audience said, costs will revert back to the mean. And it happens all the time. I've seen it for years and years. So, anyway.
Okay, just one comment, I guess. I want everyone to understand during an emergency repair, if something were to fail, whether it's a year from now, two years from now, whether it's water main, sewer, whatever it is, we are 100% at the mercy of the contractor. It is an emergency repair, and you are going to pay the cost to fix it. There might be additional claims from homeowners, from backed-up sewers, things of that nature, but you are 100% at their mercy during an emergency repair.
Okay, thank you. Any final comments? Schultz?
I certainly agree with what a lot of the council people have already said regarding, if it was a project for me, to certainly look at three bids is the optimal. And I, I think to some extent, we're at a, a situation with a couple of these projects where others have already looked at it. We didn't get the formal bid, but they knew what they had, and I trust our engineering staff to know, and to Susan's point, that they have that number that is already set because they are educated and knowledgeable from the city standpoint. And when they see what the contractor comes back, it's pretty close, right? That's why we're not denying many of these, is because we went into that with some knowledge about it. So it, it is a tough pill to swallow, but putting off and putting off and putting off is a tough pill to swallow, too.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilor Sires, you've not spoken yet.
Uh, since this sewer line has been relined, I don't believe that there will be a failure or an emergency failure on it. When those guys do their job, municipal pipe tool, they do an excellent job, and that's why they reline pipes. Little bit of history on that. They put that thing in by hand, 25 feet deep. I've seen photographs of it. It's amazing. I'm not worried about that failure on that pipe and however long we put it off. It'll be fine. You got to remember that the water mains are only about five and a half foot deep, so the repairs on those would be much easier. So I'm in favor of waiting and doing the job later when I know that there probably will not be failure in that sewer main. That's all.
Thank you. So with that, looking at this item 24, it's the resolution receiving and filing and approving and accepting the bid of Peterson Contractors in the amount of $29,97, $49.50, being the only bid received for Main Street reconstruction project. If this has been motioned and seconded, it requires a roll call vote.
Four voting aye, three voting nay. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So that does pass, and brings us over to item 25, which is a resolution receiving and filing the bids and approving and accepting the bid of Peterson, oh, excuse me. Okay, yes. Bid of Peterson Contractors in the amount of 6,2, I'll say, $6,279,130, being the lowest bid received for the Cedar River Recreational Project area and Riverbank Improvements project. Is there a motion to approve?
Summit.
Second.
Motioned and seconded. Councilmore done. You'd ask to have this pulled?
Yes, and I apologize, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I, you know, Councilman Harding pulled 26. I, I don't really have, my question is more to staff about, so I apologize if you'd rather have me speak about it in 26.
Um, if the council's okay with it, we can consider both together. I have no concerns about that. We would vote on them separately, but we can have them discussed together.
So I think it's going to go to Mr. Shragi about, as we proceed, if, if we do proceed forward, you know, safety, the best of the best, big concerns with myself, I assume all of us, that's a, a concern. So the in-water features, is there a plan, or what is the plan, to make sure there is someone with expertise? Because is, does PCI have expert, like, have they ever built a whitewater course, to your knowledge?
Actually, I believe they have.
Okay, okay. And do they have, to your knowledge, like, a person, or how did that go?
I am actually working with a consultant to bring a contract forward to, to the council regarding inspection of in-stream structures. The out-of-stream is, is fairly standard work that our engineering division does, so that inspection is, is not, I'm not worried about that. But in, the in-stream structures, we're working with a consultant on that.
Okay, and like, just for my own, like, inspection, does that also mean, like, the building, would that, would that person possibly in the contract be the person present as a place?
Correct.
Area, okay. All right, I just wonder, I mean, I've been, obviously, the places around here, Charles City, Manchester and those things, but also, like, you know, when you go, I've been to Slide of Colorado, and you watch people, all, all levels participating in there. And so I think for all of us, including the city of And so I think for all of us, including the city of Cedar Falls, safety would be a big concern and, and having someone that's done that before, to me, is very important. So, thank you for that explanation.
Quick, quick follow-up. And I'm just assuming so, the, you said you were working on a possible contract pending approval of this item for a consultant. Is it a consultant that just specializes in whitewater or?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Schultz.
Is that, uh, cost then part of this or is that any idea on what additional cost that would be?
That would be a separate item that would come before you and I don't know that cost right now.
So, do I understand then that that addition wouldn't be, um, required for the, like this project? It's not a required additional cost, but it's a, uh, optional add-on in order to provide additional oversight? Did I say that correctly?
Correct. Just to, to have some expertise on those structures that are built in the river.
Okay. Yes, yeah, Councilor Cruz.
Can you elaborate who it is or are we taking bids on that particular engineering function, water flow engineering?
Um, I'm actually working with a, a local consultant in which they would, you know, they, they hire subcontractors or sub consultants to do that work and I don't know the name of that company right now.
But we would put this out to bid on the specs of, the expectation of this component of the project so that other people that might have expertise in that can come forward and say, this is what it would cost or, you have a dollar figure in mind? 10, 20,000, 30,000?
General inspection is, is anywhere between 8 and 10% of the construction cost. But keep in mind, we're only talking about the in-river, none of the out, anything outside of the riverbank.
How much does the in-river cost out of the 6 million?
I don't know off the top of my head if we.
I think it was 4.
So 10%, 400,000? I think that, that, no.
I don't have the numbers in front of me for the, the actual total of the in-river. Until I get that estimate from the consultant, then I'd be able to pass that along.
Well, let's say that Peterson has, let's see, 6.2, let's say the in-river is one-third of that, 2 million. And if the engineering firm is going to charge 10%, that's $200,000. That seems.
In your example, that would be correct.
Yeah, I mean, I think that needs to be put out to bid. Once we know the parameters of what would be asked for so that not just one consultant could come forward and say, I'm going to offer you 10 or 8%.
So if I understand right, just to kind of repeat from earlier, that, um, inspection process is, is not required for this construction? Is that right?
Technically, it's not. We have engineering staff to perform the construction inspection. We don't have someone with specific expertise in the in-river structures for whitewater course.
What you meaning Cedar Falls Engineering or PCI or?
Cedar Falls Engineering Staff.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, Councilor, is it done?
Mr. Mayor, so I just wonder for my own, um, so as, if, if this is tonight, if tonight's moved forward and then this contract is brought forward, I guess my concern is, um, and please know I'm not, I, I just, if it's, I'm not, um, second guessing anyone or I'm not trying to. I, I just, for this project, I feel like that in-water portion and my concern is if we vote to pass it, but then we don't vote to have this oversight, um, that's concerning for me, right? I mean, I, I just worry that if we do something, especially, um, we're, we're hoping to bring people in and for people who are, uh, of all levels, but especially the kayaking, the whitewater community, we want them to be excited, right? And I just, I guess, so if this passes, but we don't vote to pass a consultant who's an expert, how does that work? I mean, I, are we, have we blown some money or, um, or is it too late to go back or, or how does that process work? Anyone?
Who would like to take that? Mr. Gaines?
Well, I'll try to handle it. So, um, as that process moves forward, we bring forward a contract. The council can vote that contract up or down. And so, you know, let's just say they still want some oversight. We can work with those contractors to, or that, uh, that consultant engineers in this particular case to try to figure out what, what they need to get the job done and make sure it's a successful project, I guess, is, not, not seeing the scope of services and, and all of those things yet. It's, it's kind of a wide-open question, so I apologize for my vague answer.
Okay. Councilor Harding and then Councilor Schultz.
So, to Councilmember Cruz's point, is, is, would this be something suitable to send like an RFP or, you know, out? Let's say the project is approved and we want to have an engineer or some sort of person with specialty in the water. Is there a way that we could open that up for a bid or request for proposals or is that not the, the process that we?
Well, it can, it can go two ways. I can work with other consultants that I've worked with previously that we've had success on projects with, or it can go out for an RFP, which is a timely process. Would it take months to go through an RFP process?
Okay, Councilor Schultz.
So from the historical standpoint, we've been looking at this, I think, for five, six, maybe more years. And, uh, the, the plans look to be fairly precise. I, I don't know if you're being conservative by saying that the consultant could be 8% just to cover, but, um, you know, I, I think this is a partnership that we're working with federal and state and gaming and, uh, volunteers for donations. You know, we've been talking about this again, another project for a long time and it's not just a downtown project. It's not just for folks that kayak. This would be aesthetically and, uh, a great project for the entire city. That being said, I, I don't want to hold this up on a number we have no idea what's going to be for something we don't even know if we need, you know? Is it that we have to have someone sitting there making sure that the limestones are at this specific angle to, to know what the, the water current is going to do? Or is there, out of this entire six or seven-year process, that this has already been talked about? This is where the, those stones need to be? This is where the water needs to flow? So.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilor Cruz.
I'd like to make a motion to have an RFP for what I'm calling a water flow engineer to get a specific price on what we have been speaking in general terms because I'm not comfortable going forward with just talking with a friend of a consultant and that sort of thing, so.
So unless council would disagree, I, I would have to consider that out of order because it's not an amendment to the plan that's in front. It's an additional proposal. So council can overrule me if you wish.
We're already in a motion, so you can't.
It would have to be an amendment to what's on the floor and I don't see where an amendment would, would apply here because it's, it's accepting a contract with Peterson Contractors.
Mr. Mayor. Director Shragi is explaining that there's going to be an expense for a water flow engineer, if that's a term that's appropriate, to determine the flow of water with high water, low water, the safety features that'll be an end result. Because if we don't have that qualified person, the whole project could end up being a disaster as has happened in a project in Northeast Iowa where it's not safe and they spent millions on it. So I think it's imperative that we have open bidding on the water flow component of how it's designed that has the expertise and we can evaluate the expertise of different firms that say they can do this. To say 10%, 8% of the in-water cost, that just is a huge number in my mind and, um, we got to have open bidding on this. So that's the nature.
I understand that, but.
Well, then do I put it at a refer, you know?
Please don't interrupt. The motion on the floor is to receive and file and approve and accept the bid of Peterson Contractors and that's all we can vote on right now. Certainly if you'd like to present a referral after, that would be very appropriate.
Why can't I amend this?
Please forward an amendment.
I'm, I'm, make a motion to amend item 25 or 26, whichever is appropriate here, to get an RFP for a water flow engineer.
Again, it's, unless council disagrees, I'm going to rule this out of order because you are not, you are not speaking to the item itself that we are, we are voting on. This is a, a contract. You've seen it in the packet. It's the contract with Peterson Contractors and that's all we can vote on here. I hate to talk down to you, but.
No, you don't have to talk down.
This is what we're voting on.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I think staff understands exactly what Councilman Cruz is saying, though. When we bring back, um, we'll bring back costs and, and credentials for that particular consultant for doing that work. So, so you can evaluate if you'd like to approve the contract at that time.
But I'd like to see multiple people that are water flow engineers.
It's, it's going to be a specialty, so we'll see what, what we can get out of that because there's prob, I think the consultant that they may be talking to is in Colorado.
I think there's only a handful of consultants and like I said, RFPs take months and the in-river construction to be, as a contractor, to be in the water building these, their window is only January to March. They have to be done by the end of next year, so.
Here's, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember DeBir.
That whole conversation, it's a lot like when we did the dam repair. There was very few, um, experts that were able to do it and it was a small window. But my question really was, is this question as to whether or not the second bidder here, had the, had that included in their bid, but Peterson did not? Or is this a whole separate issue they're discussing?
It, it's a whole separate issue that neither of these bidders had this in there.
Okay.
But Mr. Cruz, I, I think we do understand what you're saying and we will do the best to bring back multiple bids, multiple credentials.
Right. I mean, the thing that's really irritating to me, you know, five years in council, we get these times where it's going to take forever to get something and it's, I think, a false proclamation to say it's going to take a really long time to get RFPs. You put it out there, these people know what they're doing, they can comment and get it to us and tell them it's urgent that we want it. I'm, it's frustrating and upset. So we're going to have an RFP? Do I need a referral to have an RFP? Or you, you understand what I want?
But I understand the result you want. I, I think we can call different places. We can get as many bids or, or credentials and.
To Director Shragi's comment, he says they're already doing that. So I just want to hear and see multiple qualified water flow engineers coming forward with numbers.
And we've been working with this consultant for, I have been for about two months and I still don't have that cost.
And what's their name?
I would have to ask our, the local consultant that I've been working with what, what that firm is, but I know they're out of Colorado.
Okay.
So if there's no objection from council, we'll avoid having to do the referral for that. It sounds that staff is, is amenable to getting the three or the multiple bids forward. So there'd be no need to refer that forward then. Thank you. Councilor Gifford.
Yep. I'm just looking for a little bit of an education on this piece. Chase, maybe you can help me out. I'm looking through the numbers in comparison and by and large, TSP is a little bit higher than PCI, but on one line item with the coffer dam installation and removal, Peterson's at 2.5 million and TSP's at 67. How can we, can we piecemeal these? Can we say we accept everything except for your coffer dam and then we'll go elsewhere for those services or is this just part and parcel to their discounted rate, if you will? Because that's a huge disparity. If we could get that coffer dam installed and maintained by somebody else, take PCIs all day.
I mean, you're correct. Different contractors hide costs in different line items and that's the line item that PCI chose to put a lot of their incidental costs in. TSP decided to disperse them over all items. It's also a means and methods type of construction. Peterson might have a different method to do it than TSP is going to do it, proposed. So we really can't amend this bid in any fashion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilor Sires.
I just have a question for Chase. This is only the water structures. There's nothing, no paths, no amenities up on the shore for people to walk by.
Yes, all of that.
All of that what?
In structure and everything you just referenced. Riverbank improvements, trails.
What did we cut off?
Uh, from the previous bid? Is that what you're asking? Approximately 1.3 million dollars worth of work. There was a repetitive trail segment that we felt wasn't needed, took that out. Some other amenity-type items, irrigation, things like that, we removed as, and bid it as an alternate, hoping that if costs came in lower during this bid cycle, obviously they didn't. They just continued to go up. So.
So it's pretty much the same?
Yep.
The in-water part is identical. It's the external landscaping and part of it that was, that was toned down. But the nice thing about the, the approach that the staff took is that, as he said, with the additions, they could be tacked on later and it sounds like that might just be an, an additional fundraising project down the road. But not part of the current. No pun intended.
Yeah. See what you did there.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just for clarity then, those alternates 1 through 8 were already removed and that was, Stephanie, you'd already clarified that there is no in-water, in-water features that have been adjusted. Those alternates were the adjustments you made months ago.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments from the council before we go to public?
Um, I, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. So the firm that designed the, uh, the design, did they, are they no longer part? Like what was that? How did that? They, they were just, just like paid to design it and then that was it or how does that
They were hired to put together a bid package, final plans and specs to move forward to a letting, correct?
Okay. And then are they like, would they be one of the experts of, in our, like, like, there's a few experts. Are they an expert in the in-water design and building?
They're a, a, a river company out of Colorado, so yes.
Okay, okay. So like, I'm assuming this, uh, RFP? No, whatever the RF.
RFP.
Okay. Is that a similar to every other bid where like anybody can bid on it? Is that what that means?
So typically an RFP is sent to targeted companies. Obviously, we're not going to send a, an RFP of this nature to a transportation consultant.
Okay.
In this particular case, the, the, it's my understanding and some other staff can jump in here, but we actually have a contract with this particular consultant to do these in-river inspections. But that consultant has recently said, you know, after I submit the bid package, I'd like to be done with this project. So they've kind of removed themselves from that, is my understanding. Is that yours, Chase?
That's accurate, correct.
Okay.
Great. So with that, I'll open it up for the public if there's questions or comments on the item. Yes, Mr. Fairbanks.
Craig Fairbanks, 405 Spruce Hills. And I just have one question because I'm a little ignorant on, um, the process of the, of the, um, consultant, as, as you say, is, uh, is their position in just doing the, the, uh, the supervision of the project? And is the design placed in such a way that, that a contractor could do it and not need that? Or is there some question about, why do we, I guess I don't know why we always need to have those extra consultants?
Okay, thank you. So you can take your question. But do you have any other questions?
No, I don't have anything else.
Okay, okay. So yes, would you like to answer that?
I guess depending on the, the type of project, there's some certifications that may be required for, for the inspection just to ensure that we get that.
that may be required for, for the inspection, just to ensure that we get that quality product and that they are built to the specifications in the plans.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
We're still in public comment.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Any other comments from the public or questions? Okay, then I'll take it back to counsel and yes, Councilmember Cruz.
Director Shoggy, we've had different consultants over, I don't know, five, seven years on this whole thing. What is the local person you're dealing with? What firm are you dealing with besides PCI? Who, who are we dealing with?
I've been dealing with AECOM out of Waterloo.
Okay. Are they the whitewater gurus? Or is that the firm in Colorado that you're talking about?
The firm in Colorado.
And what's their name?
I would have to ask AECOM what that firm name is.
There's no trickle down to know who subcontractors are in these types of things?
Until I get that scope of services that I've said I've been talking to them with. When I get that price and scope of services, I'll have all that information in there.
Okay, and then of the previous bidders or contractors over the years, what happened with them, if you can elaborate at all, or they just dropped out of the picture? Because we had one that I remember quite some time ago, before I was in counsel, that had a proposal that I thought we were close to doing and then it fell apart? Or what happened with that?
I have to ask for counsel, I guess, this line of questioning, does it, do you feel like it relates to the, the project that's on the floor? Because I'm, I'm questioning if we're starting to talk about things outside the scope of, of the approval process for this bid.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
I'm, I'm talking, asking counsel.
I'd like to hear what he had to say.
Okay.
I think, I think it's, it's a line, but I think gaining reassurance that if we accept the bid, we're going to be working with someone who has that expertise in the water because, you know, placing the rocks, we don't want to have a, a bad thing.
So part of the line of reasoning to tie in with this.
So I view it as, you know, this is helping me decide if I want to accept this bid. So I'd like to continue.
Continue, please.
Yeah, I mean, what happened with the previous firm from five, seven years ago? Were they fired or they just, we just didn't move ahead? Or, Mr. Gaines, can you elaborate in detail?
So, yeah, I, I couldn't.
Is there like two or three of them in the past, I want to say?
So what, what I'm recalling is the city council had a contract with a firm and I can't even remember the firm's name at this time. And they did a preliminary design and that actually included removing the dam at that particular time. So it, that was where, if you look in the title, part of the safety component was, was in that. So the city council didn't want to, at the time, if I'm remembering correctly, wanted to go a different direction and didn't want the, the safety components and the dam removed and they wanted a, a smaller project, so to speak. That's, I'm, I'm paraphrasing. And so we actually went out and, and hired the firm that we have now and I couldn't, I couldn't, I, what is?
Riverwise.
Riverwise is, is the firm. And so they went out and hired the firm and again, we've been under this contract for maybe four or five years to do the design, get it to where we need to be and, and get all the permits from the DNR and the Corps of Engineers and get that ready to, for a bidding process. So again, last year, we had that initial bidding. It came in, the prices were right around 6.2, 6.3 million. We removed, what did, what was that, Chase? About 1.3 out of the, the, the bid prices and here they came back in again at about 6.2 million. So if you look at where the engineer's estimate is in this particular case, it's, you know, between 35 and 40% that, that those bid prices have increased.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Dunn.
So I, I echo what Councilman Harding said a little bit ago. This is, I'm not, like, my concern is that, that if, if we proceed with this project, that it is the best it can be. And that is not to slight anyone or take away from anyone. It is simply because I feel like this is a very specialized project that, you know, not, not, the outside stuff, forgive me, but I, that doesn't, it's the in-water stuff that as a council person, as we proceed with whether or not we're going to accept this bid, those are the things that I worry about. If I, if I vote yes to say I'm going to accept this bid, but I, I am concerned about the reassurance of knowing that the in-water stuff is going to be done by an expert who has whitewater building knowledge and expertise. And that's why I questioned if, I, I, I assume like with the last bid, time is of the essence and, but, and I, and I appreciate staff moving forward with the conversation of securing, you know, possible bids for that expert. I guess my concern, though, is if we, for some reason, don't get that expert approved, where are we at in this process? And maybe, I mean, that's just how I'm thinking as, you know, one of seven council people. So I, I'm just concerned about.
So, Mr. Mayor, I, I think to Kelly's, if I follow Kelly correctly, we, if we approve this tonight, it's with knowledge of knowing that this isn't the end-all, be-all that we are anticipating, that staff is, Chase is going to, Ron's going to continue to work to assure that we have an expertise in the placement of the, the rock and, and creation of the, of the course, that we're going to end up with something that's safe, to Daryl's point, that we don't end up with an unsafe outcome and that it's within somewhat of a, of a range of 8 to 10%. But is that what you're saying, Kelly?
Well, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm saying that, knowing that that's going to be an additional, so really, it's going to be up to the council. I guess that's my concern is if I, if we vote yes, and I, I mean, I want to vote yes, but then I've got this concern and then I wonder like what if the additional cost isn't passed? So then are we building a whitewater course without that additional oversight? And I, again, I, I do worry about, and it's not to slight anyone. It's just, I feel like this is a very specialized thing and it's not, I mean, a river is, a river is a beautiful thing, but it also is something that needs to be respected and I want it to be the best as far as exciting and, and safe for all levels of folks. And so that's where I get worried by moving forward on a vote. But I also assume, am I wrong in assuming, Mr. Shoggy, it's, it wouldn't, with, I'm assuming like the other contractor or the other bid, they, are these prices only good for, you know, like till like the end of the year?
We've had staff already out at the rock core, he's trying to select rock because the prices are going up.
Right, okay, so that's, I mean, yeah.
And Mr. Gaines, did you have a comment you wanted to add in?
So just to, to, the engineer of record is Shane Siegel with Riverwise. He's the one that took his license, stamped the plant, plans and specifications. And out of the specifications, under the general notes, this is in the bid package, engineer's oversight. Under one, I'll read a small excerpt. It's, it is imperative that an experienced engineer perform observations on the river-related aspects of the project and site conditions will require changes, modifications and updates to the plans and the design intent they convey. So what they're saying there is really they need somebody that has that experience of building these in there to make sure that it doesn't become a dangerous or, or maybe even more simplistic, that it doesn't become just something that doesn't work so how it was designed.
And, and just for the sake of knowing where potential funding sources are, if this were 200,000, I mean, it's kind of a ballpark figure, we don't know for sure, but if, say, the cost was $200,000 over for this inspection service, is that something that, can we guess if that would, that would be compatible under the Destination Iowa grant? Where we couldn't apply for, for this project because it was too far along, if I understand right? And so we, we weren't competitive for that and we had to do bridge lining. It's like 500,000 total. Is this something that we could potentially go forward to the Destination Iowa folks and request additional funding?
It, it potentially could be. I, I, I can't tell you what that number is going to be that Chase is going to give back. But if I recall, and Stephanie, you might be able to help me with this, but the approved contract that Riverwise hands for doing construction inspection is far less than that. I want to say it's 40 to 50,000. I don't, maybe you can find that number, but, but it's, it's not a $200,000 number.
The way the CIP funding is laid out right now accounts for this base bid from PCI and some allowance for some inspection services.
Okay. Yes, Councilmember Cruz.
Ron, Mr. Gaines, you just, you read what sounds like Riverwise wants a water flow engineer there, but they're not providing it in that bid.
They, they were leaving it open, so it could be the city's selection. So if they weren't chosen, or in this particular case, where they've requested to, to not be, that, yes, that somebody would be present.
But they don't have somebody qualified that they want to offer?
No, no, so, so they actually, we have, let me back up, slow down here a little bit. So last year, when this project was bid and we thought it was going to come in at a reasonable price and we ended up rejecting the bids, before we rejected the bids or got to the bid price, we were working out with Riverwise that they would be the inspectors that would come in. So we approved a construction observation, construction administration type contract with them. That contract was then never enacted, never went forward. The council approved it, but obviously, we haven't done construction services. So at this time, my understanding is Riverwise has said, "Look, we provided the bid package. We're ready to separate our ways." So now what, what Chase is doing is trying to find a replacement to go, to do those services.
Okay. Thank you for that, Mr. Mayor. I guess to the point earlier, you didn't feel it appropriate to amend this to include an RFP for water engineer services. Based on what Mr. Gaines just read, we want to have that component in on this as a contingency of some sort, because that's an important component of this.
But the issue is that what we're, what we have in front of us is, is the contract from, from Peterson. Like, we have their document in front of us. We can't manipulate that document. We can only vote that document up or down. Now, if we want to do additional services or additional requirements, Mr. Gaines has already said they're going to do that. They're going to provide that information. But it doesn't impact whether or not this contract is approved or not. So there's, there's no place, and I don't, I don't want to be domineering on this. If counsel disagrees, I just don't see any place where, where you put that RFP into this approval.
Maybe I could offer something here, Mayor. So, you know, it was earlier stated something about going back with, get back to the contractor about, that's unlawful. This is a public bid process. This is the bid, it's the meets and bounds of the bid. That's what's before counsel for consideration. So we couldn't impose that kind of condition on this bidder because it wasn't part of the bid package.
Right, but we're, Mr. Gaines, you read Riverwise's component, which is what was given to PCI to bid on? Is that the way I understand it?
It was one of the general notes in, in the construction package, yes.
So PCI is not providing a water flow engineer. Riverwise is not providing a water flow engineer, but they're saying in the contract, they want to have a water flow engineer there to observe that we build it correctly so it's not dangerous or it actually does what it's supposed to do. So don't we want to put in formality, and this is more to Mr. Rogers to, to say, we want notations in the, in the council minutes to say, "We want to pursue formally an RFP, a request for proposal, from firms that provide water flow engineering services." Do we not?
Can you answer that, Mr. Rogers?
Counsel can do that, but not as part of this item. We, we can't impose that condition on this bidder. But counsel could, in referrals, for instance, say, "Moving forward this project, we really want staff to go out and get some expertise on this in-river element as the original engineer suggested." I think it's contemplated that's going to happen.
And if I understand right, that you, you want that consultation, you want that to be part of this contract coming forward? Which means, if I understand right, you want that to be included in here?
It was stated by what Mr. Gaines read, that they wanted a water flow engineer.
My question is, do you want that?
Of course.
Then, then the remedy for, for somebody who wants that into this contract, who doesn't think this contract is correct, is to vote down the contract.
No, that's not.
That's the, that's the, I mean, I don't, I don't want to force a, a false decision. But that's, that's what our options are here. You can say yes or no to the contract and that's it. You cannot amend it, yes.
Well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please, Councilmember Giffel.
Thanks. I just wanted to double check. Is postponement on this item even an option? The reason I'm asking is if we push this to a couple of weeks out or four weeks out, would it give us the opportunity and within legal confines to talk to these contractors and say, "Hey, is this service something that you're willing to include or is it included? It just wasn't looked at at a line item." Part of what I'm getting at is TSP Environmental is, they specialize in this type of construction more than PCI does. I know they're a little bit higher bid, but if they provide that service as part of their engagement, even if we had it added on in writing sometime in the next two weeks or before bringing this contract back, could we add that in and know that, hey, that's going to be added at no additional value and then we can accept even the higher bid? I can't believe I'm saying that, but it, it gives us that option. So postponement is an option, is the first question. Postponing the vote on this bid, or is that not an option, Mr. Rogers?
I think there's a couple of things. There's funding that Stephanie may be able to speak to regarding the gaming grant and more specifically, the EDA grant, I think, has the end of the calendar year date, if I recall, to have a contract in place. And then not to mention the contract documents for the contractor only being a certain window. They can, they can only work in the river during the months between January and March. That's it.
So, Mr. Mayor?
I guess I'd like to, that's fine, I wasn't trying to cut you off, but I'd like to know if postponement is an option still. I understand there's ramifications to that decision, but it's less impactful than voting it down and not seeing it again for six months.
So like Chase mentioned with the EDA grant, it was a mid-December timeframe to have a contract. So I already had spoken with them about, hey, it might be just a little bit longer here. It's the 19th, for example, today. So, and they were comfortable with just bring amendment back. They were anticipating that we would probably approve something by the end of the year. That's what I conveyed to them. If it's a little bit longer, I, I need to talk with them again and visit and I'd also need to visit with the gaming grant folks.
Gotcha. So last point, last point of clarification then, is if we did go forward with this, approve this project and the subsequent, the subsequent agreement and they don't provide that engineer and it comes out being astronomically higher than what we anticipated, what have we done to our riverfront? Is it unusable, potential safety hazard, a liability that we can't allow people in the water? What's the potential damage that we could do by not getting that engineer to sign off on the entirety of this project before we say yes to the contract?
Well, maybe to quantify costs a little bit, if that's what you're a little concerned about. I just pulled up the contract that we did for construction services that was mentioned earlier with the prior consultant. And that contract had a, a base amount of $83,550 and additional almost $10,000 of specialist site visit if, at our option. So, you know, it was about a $93,000 contract, for example, for construction oversight for the river items. And we did budget in the CIP that you reviewed tonight, did include design services and we factored in a little bit more than this, just in case those costs went up. So what we have in the CIP, we hope is a comfortable number related to the design services. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Dunn.
So again, I don't want to take away from, in my own opinion, I don't want to take away from supporting and moving forward in this. And it sounds like staff already, again, is well aware of, and I mean, they're already working on gathering bids and possible people to be the oversight experts of this project. I don't want to risk losing grant money and costs going up. I, I feel, you know, what Councilman Cruz said earlier, does that need to be a referral or we're just under, like, after? Not here. I know it's not part of this contract. But do we need an official referral later? And also, is there anything stopping, I guess my question is, is, is there anything stopping the previous consultant from being one of the bidders? the previous consultant from being one of the bidders? I mean, is it just anyone? Anyone can bid that's an expert if they are notified, or however that bid process works? Is that, am I wrong in thinking that, or?
Yes, we'll have staff reach out and contact folks that are experts in this field, get cost estimates and their credentials, that way we can bring those back forward with a recommendation.
Okay. And understanding that the process or the purpose of the referral is to direct staff to do something they wouldn't normally do otherwise, like, we want to be careful of their time, so we want to make sure our council's on board with them doing that. So I understand from Ron, they are already amenable to doing that work, and it's, so it's, I don't feel like it needs the formality of a referral if council's okay with that, since they've already agreed to do it.
Sure.
Sure, well, Mr. Mayor, it's in the contract. It says they want somebody to oversee it.
That's a different contract. It's not in the, it's not in the.
In the Peterson.
Not in the Peterson, it's in the, it's in the design contract.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's an element that we need to bring forward.
I agree.
Yeah.
And it will be.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay.
So to your point, we don't need the referral.
Okay, so anything else to have to, questions or?
I have one last question.
Yes, Councilor Harding.
Is it law that we have to take the lowest bid? Or is it, you know, because of the TSP having more experience building these things and being that, would it be prudent to look at taking them over Peterson in this case? Or do we have to, by law, take the lowest bid?
Not the lowest dollar bid. Lowest responsive, responsible bidder is the legal requirement. So it's not necessarily lowest cost, lowest price bid, but it's the lowest responsive, responsible bidder.
So to that effect, is there a reason why we went with Peterson over the TSP? Being that TSP seems to kind of specialize in this, or it seems like by their website and by the information I found, they seem to do this sort of thing more?
We don't have any work experience with TSP. Obviously, we've had work experience with Peterson Contractors, and to our knowledge that they built one in Iowa. So that was the reasoning.
Plus, we'd have to justify rejecting the low bid in very, very specific ways and identify how PCI was not responsive to the bid, and they were responsive. So I would, I'm not going to sit here at all and recommend we reject the PCI bid under any circumstance.
Okay, I was just curious, thanks.
All right, so we've discussed this through, then it's been motioned and seconded, and we'll take the two votes separately, just to be clear or clean here. So the first is item 25, the resolution receiving and filing the bids and approving and accepting the bid of Peterson Contractors in the amount of $6,279,130, being the lowest bid received for the Cedar River Recreational River Area and Riverbank Improvements Project. Motioned and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
Six voting aye, one voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And that then takes us to item 26, which is the resolution receiving, approving and accepting the contract and bond of Peterson Contractors for the Cedar River Recreation River Area and Riverbank Improvements Project. It's been motioned and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
Are we using the same motion?
This is 26.
It needs a motion and a second?
We did discuss them together.
Okay, so yeah, let's take the motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So motion and seconded, is any additional discussion? Okay, any from the public on the approval of the contract? Okay, so, so motion and seconded now requires a roll call vote. Thanks for catching me on that.
Mine said something different.
Councilor Dunn?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, did it go, Jackie? Okay.
Oh, I thought mine was, you waiting on me?
Yeah, do it again, hit refresh. Yours did the same thing, mine did.
Okay.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And that takes us out of the resolution calendar and over into bills and claims. Is there a motion to approve bills and claims for December 19th?
Summed.
Second.
Motioned and seconded, any discussion? Any from the public? Just a motion and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam. So that passes and takes us to council updates and announcements. So are there any updates or announcements for tonight? Seeing none, then council referrals. But there was one that we still wanted to bring forward for tonight, is that correct?
Yeah, I'd like to make the referral that we place on the next council meeting because it would have to be on January 3rd for the issue on the two-thirds vote, for the veto.
So it's a motion to place on the floor, a vote to override the veto, is that a good way to word that?
Yeah.
Okay, so a motion and seconded?
Who's second, I'm sorry.
Who's the second?
Thank you.
So motioned and seconded, all in favor say, wait, wait, I guess we open for discussion, right?
We're looking at January 3rd.
For January 3rd, okay.
It has to be before the 13th.
Okay, so any discussion? Okay, so motion and seconded, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so let's see, show of hands, one, two, three, for aye, one, two, three, four, five, and then a nay? One, two. Okay, so that does pass, and so that'll be on the council agenda for next session. All right, so then, that takes us over to, any other referrals, I should ask? Okay, seeing none? Then I will entertain a motion to move us to executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and this, actually, I say this executive session to discuss legal matters per Iowa Code 21.51(c), to discuss strategy with council and matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent, where its disclosure would likely, be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the governmental body in that litigation. So it's been motioned, and there's a second, did we get a second on it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And so we will adjourn to executive session. That will be in the conference room. We'll come back out just for a moment in order to adjourn. There'll be no vote taken tonight at the end of the executive session. So that basically concludes the meeting. As I said, we'll just be back for a moment once we're. So want to wish everybody happy holidays and wish us, or have us move to executive session.